Evening, everybody. I'm R. Whitman, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board. I'd like to bring this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, March 20, 2023 at 6:30. Does any, the first order of business, does anybody have any conflict of interest with what's shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
The next one is minutes. We have minutes from, we have minutes from March 2nd. Let's see. Mike, Martha, Tony, and myself, we're all here. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Accept motion to approve.
Motion by Mike, second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't like some.
I never can tell.
No.
It doesn't look like it is.
No.
No.
Now it is.
Yeah, okay. I feel like something wasn't right.
The next one is for March 13th. We have myself, Mike, Naomi, Martha, and Tony. So we're all here. Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Martha. For discussion, in item number two, it said that the Vice Chair was passed by a vote of 500. I may have said that wrong, but Tony did not vote for himself. So it is, I'd like to amend it to 401.
Yep.
Okay? Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business, warrants. We have, there's just no payroll warrant, just a check warrant number 31 for $34,994.87.
Same.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $9,426. Bennington County Sheriff's, $1,508. GABO Fuel, $1765, $1,056. William E. Daley, $5775. Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, $1,025.
It's the road department.
Road.
Pay for the privilege to drive on the roads.
Any discussion? Entertain a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Public announcements? Is there any announcements, anybody? Nothing pressing at this time?
Nope.
Do we need to send a letter to Karen Millinger thanking her?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
I think that would be a nice gesture. We could do that for the town meeting, for helping organize the potluck.
Oh, the potluck.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. We're up to public comments. Is anybody, nobody's here, but is there anybody on Zoom?
One person, but they're not raising their hand.
Melanie?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. I haven't been here a while, so I've just thought we'd look at February. Just put that one to bed. Can we see the cash flow first, Dave? Or, yeah, there we go. Let's see. The big number that jumps out there, obviously, is delinquent taxes. That's, that's a lot for, for a single month this time of year. But I think that there were a couple of just really big ones that, that was able to clear out. Everything else is pretty small for the month. So that's, Dave, could you go down to the bottom half? Okay, so we wrote a lot of, wrote a lot of checks in February. So you can see that the cash balance is getting a little lower than I want to see at this time of year. We can't, that's our real cash position, we have to, you know, get through June. But the thing to remember is that there was a lot of due-to, due-froms that I needed to clear out. That's money that the general fund is owed by the reserve accounts because we have been writing a lot of checks on those. And you'll see, when we get, excuse me, when we get to March, I have done a big transfer. So we are absolutely fine for cash. But I just didn't want that number to alarm anybody, that we had all those dispersments in a single month and just looking at 290 to get us through the end of June. We're actually in perfectly good shape. As you can see, the reserve fund is, that's a pretty elevated number, too. So when we get to March, that's going to be about $300,000 lower and the general fund will be about $300,000 higher. Can we go down and look at our, down to the, comparing to budget? Now, you're, this, this marks the point at which we can't compare it to last year anymore. You may recall, there was that big flow-through grant that it made both our, everybody but Naomi will remember this, or unless you were paying very close attention to meetings. We had this flow-through grant that came, basically it was money that flowed.
I actually did.
You did? Okay, good. So it was a Shires housing thing. And what that meant is that we can't look at what our revenue and expenditures were last year anymore because, as a comparison to this year, because that was very anomalous. So already, you see that, that last year, we were at over 100% of our revenues, that's why. And, but the, we hadn't paid it out yet, so that's why the expenditure's still, it's just not a comparison that's useful. I shouldn't even have it up there anymore. But, but the, the picture for this year is very normal. It's exactly how it looks, how it usually looks. We're three-quarters of the way through the year, we're three-quarters of the way through our expenditures, everything's completely normal. If I take a real quick, quick look at the reserves, absolutely nothing going on there except for a little bit of water there in the 260 line. You can see $473. That's, those are all delinquent water payments that are coming in very slowly. And I think one of those payments was actually from that same program that I'm always talking about.
I was just going to ask you if that was still.
Yeah, I think there was one more there. I'm not sure that program is ongoing, is it?
It's been dwindling off.
Yeah.
There was an update a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
It's essentially over though.
Yeah. So I don't expect to see much more there, but, but that did help a lot of people when it was still going. Any questions about any of that stuff?
You probably don't know the answer to this, but do you have any, just an estimate of what the, what percent of the total taxable is still outstanding?
Oh.
Delinquent taxes.
I have not looked at it lately. It was, compared to last year, it was higher than I like to see it.
Really?
I said that earlier in February, but that was before those two big checks that my work gave me. So I, I can take another look at it for next time. I think it's at a normal, a normal level. I still get, I'm getting many, many calls a day as people are doing their taxes and they did not hold on to their tax, tax bills.
Oh, no.
So that's what I mostly do in February and March. Hold on to your tax bills, do yourself a favor. Want to do your taxes when you want to do your taxes, not when I can get around to getting you your tax bill. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is some traffic ordinances. The first one is that we have finally come up with, we think we have met everybody's concerns. So, on the website, this is on the website.
Tomorrow morning, this final version, because we were kind of restarting the process because this has had somebody's starts and stops from the first meeting several months ago. So tomorrow morning, the new list will be on the town website. At the next meeting, it'll be formally introduced and voted on by the board, and it'll go into effect 60 days after that, barring any petition to overturn it.
They have 60 days?
They have 45 days. It'll all be in the publication, 45 days from the date it's accepted by the board. It goes into effect 60 days afterwards unless there's a petition from the public.
Okay.
So we've added a number of roads that people have commented on. We've not been able to add some roads that people commented on. I found a couple of roads that were oddly left off, like in some of the developments where one road was just left off. So, you know, this is as up to date as we can get it. And I think this time, we need to move forward on this and adopt it. And any further suggestions, we'll take up as amendments later on, because we can't keep pushing this off. I think a lot of people, as it is, if formally adopted by the board next meeting, which is April 3rd, it won't be into effect until Friday, June 2nd. So I don't think we should take any further amendments to this. We need to get this out.
We need the summertime for putting up signs.
Well, it'll take a while to order the signs because these all have to be posted properly, but it needs to get up. It needs, we need to get this part done. And if someone comes up with another road, we'll take a look at that because I still have a lot of paperwork done to do for this one. So we just have to, have to call it an end somewhere.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we, I have an adoption history here. The agenda item at regular select board meeting held on, is that?
Tonight.
That's tonight, so.
So the written approved is the next meeting.
Yep.
The posted will be the day after that. The banner advertisement will be the day after that. And then I'll have all the information on the way for people to gather a petition to appeal any part of the ordinance or the entire ordinance.
You want me to date this, then?
I have my, I have my copy dated.
Yeah, okay.
Just for your information and I'll keep copying. And there's another official forum, the green forum, who documents everything, too.
So we really aren't adopting it, we're just telling?
There has to be an introductory.
Int introductory, okay. So there's no motion?
Right.
Like I said, I think it's time.
Yep.
Move this one along.
But this will be on the website?
Yes.
As of tomorrow?
It'll be on the website tomorrow, and so everybody can look and see what roads are there. And.
There has been one on the website right along, is that right?
Yeah, which has 90% of the ones now, but this will update it.
This will update it.
You know, I don't like to change that all the time because it just gets confusing. People don't know what's on there.
Right.
So we'll update this one, and that'll, should be it. Like I said, if you get a question about some other road, I'll have to take that up because after we run to the stop signs, too. So we'll put, put you on the list if you think you have another road for 25.
Okay, so that's the speed. Now we come up to stop signs. We, we do not have a very good record of stop signs.
Yeah.
So we're going to start in with these two anyways.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a need for it to be rewritten, just like the speed ordinance last was updated somewhere in, in the early 90s. Two roads were updated, most of it is from the 70s. Stop signs are as vague as can be also. We have a need to put up a stop sign at the intersection of Tancom with Murphy Hill, with that Leclerc, Murphy Hill, Allen Norris Way intersection. It has to be better controlled. One of the signs there is a questionable validity. And so we need a, we need an ordinance to enumerate all of these, which is going to require me to drive around the town again and see where all the signs are and make sure that they're all where they're supposed to be and that those that are there are, you know, up to date.
There was a bad accident there. Luckily, nobody was hurt, but it could have been serious.
Yes, could have been.
So that's why we're.
And so once you find the places that need signs again, is that an expense that comes out of our budget or is that a state?
No, that's all ours.
Okay.
Only the roads that, that come up to a state highway.
So along seven.
The state takes care of it.
Okay.
But, you know, there won't be a tremendous number because you have to be judicious with stop and yield signs.
Right.
Because too many make people ignore them because they know they don't go in. But we have a lot of rural roads where full stop is just really not necessary. But there's some places where we should have them, want to make sure that some of the cars that have them actually are recorded as having them. And someone just didn't decide to throw a sign up.
Yes.
Isn't unheard of, but.
Correct.
Happens.
Yep.
But it'll take a little while to do it, and then each, each one has to meet a set of criteria to make it valid. In most cases for this town, this is no real volume question on any road in this town. So most of it would be sightline issues. That's what brings Tancom up to be eligible because when you crest, come to the crest at Tancom.
Right.
There's a terrible sightline over to Maple Hill, Murphy Hill.
Murphy Hill.
Murphy Hill has kind of a terrible sightline to Tancom, but.
Right.
A four-way stop there is the kind of four-way stop that gets everybody to ignore it because there's not enough volume to have a real stop. So you look at the longest hill, which is Murphy coming up, and the kind of natural through is Murphy to Leclerc. So just have to have Tancom stop. And we're also going to have to put up warning signs there for, you know, slow corner intersection.
Got it.
And those who want a slow will slow and, you know.
And is this something on which we're going to be seeking public input in the course of the process?
Yep, no, as soon as I get, yeah, as soon as I get a real list up, which will probably be late April, you know, same thing, it'll be on the webpage, people have a look, comments are always worthwhile. Just like speed limits, you can't have all the speed limits you want and you're not going to have all the stop signs or yield signs you want because it's just, too many of them, people just ignore them, so.
So for these two, is this just like, are we just announcing it now and we'll vote on it next meeting? Produce these two?
No, this is just an outline graph of what we're doing.
Okay.
And it'll be one ordinance with all the rest of them on it.
Okay.
Do it once.
Yep.
And it was just as I was looking into the requirements and putting this together that I began to notice some discrepancies in some of our documentation that need to be corrected. So that's a nice way of putting that. So that's, that's what all the final thing will be. Probably the end of April, maybe the first meeting in May, because I'd like to get this done, to get all these signs corrected, again, with the 60 days. So hopefully by August 1st, we'll have ordered what we need and we'll post everything correctly and get the state police and the sheriffs updated, you know, list of what they can enforce.
Okay. Any other comments or anything on that? No. We're up to bid openings. We have bids for the culvert at the end of, this is Howard, I'm looking at the Howard Park first, I'm sorry. Howard Park, we have a permit to do some drainage?
Yeah, this bid is for the drainage part of the projects up there. Because once we fix the drainage, we can start fixing everything else.
So does this include the, the tennis or basketball court and everything else?
It includes all the drainage, the parking lot, around the basketball court, around the tennis court, down by the soccer field, down by the entrance of the park, by the pavilion, and along by the non-wetlands that we had investigated. But this is like the key to everything. You can't really fix the basketball court until you get the drainage done. You can't repay the basketball court and the tennis court until you have all the.
But that's, that's not in this?
No, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the dog park are all going to be separate.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll point out the dog park is privately funded by donation we received a couple of years ago. But we haven't been able to build because we don't have drainage to do with.
Because of this situation, yep.
Okay, first one is from Kurtz, excavating. They have a project bid for construction at $19,800. And the second one is from Matt Morris, excavating.
It sounds like a Morris company.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Speaking of Morris.
Mr. Morris has a bid of $18,500. What we usually do, is this yours or is this Mike?
Yeah, I'm going to go for this with Mike because I know a lot about this plan. As we do with all these, they go for review for two weeks and we'll order them at the next meeting.
We have to make sure that what they bid on is what we want, okay?
Yeah, especially like the next one has all kinds of quantities and everything else that Mike has to review and make sure it's right. You can leave them out, or.
And this is for a culvert way at the end of Granger Hollow Road that the state says we have to do, they've given us all the specifications and everything else. And this is from Mr. Weaver, Weaver Excavating. That's a big number.
Uh-oh.
Well, I expected to be.
Wow, okay.
And don't forget the 98 cents.
We'll just round it up. Wow, that's a lot of work.
The sad part is it's at the end of the hollow.
It's at the very bottom, right? Or is it just?
Right at the intersection of, of Granger and Shasberry Hollow.
Excellent, yes.
It's actually going to be quite a project because we have to have.
How are they going to get it?
We have to have a diversion of the water so this can be done.
I don't know how they're going to.
It is quite a project, actually.
Figure out how to.
Not, not, they're one up by the hideaway, but.
Which is the wash.
Still a big project.
And what company is this?
Okay, this is Kurtz, again, the same people that bid on that. Okay, their bid is $156,725.
That's a little bit of a difference.
Mike will tell us what we need.
Well, that's why I'm going to take him and.
Thank goodness he's got.
Go through the details and see what's up.
Okay, DPW report?
Yeah, simple, it snowed. What have they been doing? They've been plowing. Now they're pushing back some stuff that has been really the scope for the last two weeks. When they're not doing that, they've been doing some brush cutting, things like that. It's a little heavy maintenance. During the storm, it turned out very well. You know, they did a great job, very difficult to work in that. We received a few complaints, but, you know, most of those, there's just nothing you can do about. We lost a couple of mailboxes, but heavy snow, a foot and a half deep hitting your mailbox can damage it. And I know that it's in the town's right of way. We try to explain to people that we are not responsible for the mailboxes. It just happens. It's been flattened quite a number of times and there's nothing I can do about it because my mailbox is on a downhill. And, you know, it, it happens. For the most part, though, you know, we, we received maybe four complaints, which really isn't, isn't bad at all. They were out a lot, it was a lot of work, and I think they did a very good job. The volume of snow was, was quite a bit, as you all know.
Had to use the grader first time in I don't know how many years.
Yeah, Ron's truck broke down, so, but that's the reason why it's set up and it was just ready to go and go out. And a few years ago, I remember when we lost two trucks during a snowstorm, and I wound up with four guys in the garage working on two trucks. And it's like, wait a minute, this is not, this is not the way this can work. So, you know, it's good to have that. And, you know, you can always take out the pickup truck, too, and do around the village and send the Chevy out there somewhere, too. So we have lots of redundancy and the grader does work. It's not, you know, ideal, but it's easy, it's not easy, but it can be set up for it and it paid off this time.
Yeah.
So had it ready to go. Otherwise, we're just looking out for projects coming up this year. We are going to be putting in the bids are due, not the bids. The grant applications are due in April, the state money. We'll probably be going for East Road this year, for the last section of East Road, and that will be done until 2025. Now, because we're looking at Buck Hill this year, White Creek next year, and East Road will be '25 then. We don't have any structures going out this year, we can't really think of one we need. We've been applying for a structure every year, so it's kind of best to skip a year Like I said, the last meeting, I think, you know, we'll be looking to do the drilling on White Creek to find out why that's sloping down, and that will probably turn into the grant next year. Because that has to be, I was talking to Mike about, I think it has to be a paving grant because it's not a structure. So, but it's going to be, that's going to be expensive. So hopefully we'll come up with that next year.
I guess I'd like to point out that there is a mailbox ordinance. The town adopted it.
Yep.
Quite a few years ago. Select Board approved it. Basically says we aren't responsible.
We are responsible. The ones we have looked at to do is when it's clear, the blade sliced the mailbox out. But if your mailbox is destroyed, it's hardly ever by the truck. And you can tell the difference. But in wet heavy snow like this, maybe there were more mailboxes and people. But in wet heavy snow like this, maybe there were more mailboxes that people just took care of. Do I take care of mine? But it wouldn't surprise me a lot because the trucks don't go that fast. But when you're putting that much off the end of the blade and that kind of heavy snow, it's an impact, you know, no doubt about it. Anyone who shovels out the end of the driveway knows how heavy that is.
Pretty sure, yes. All of Shasbury is needing chiropractic work this week.
Maybe there's a grant for that.
God, I would hope.
And we were talking just as long as we were talking about snow. We were talking about looking for a replacement for the trackless. Looking for maybe like a Kubota, smaller one with a cab that can actually fit on the sidewalks a little bit better. We can still get a lot of money for the trackless. So we might look to swap that out for something a little bit...
It's not ideal for the sidewalks?
It is, except we have some narrow sidewalks. We do get a complaint. There's one property that has its fence like next to the sidewalk. And, you know, it's like, well, there's nothing we can do. We've got to clean the sidewalk. And, you know, in the heavy snow, it had a beer rock a little bit and went across a little grass median, which is also town property. But, you know, whatever you put down a sidewalk, if there's a fence, it's like having a tree right next to the sidewalk. You know, it's a catch 22. You have to do it. And there's no way to keep snow going in one direction when you're working that tight, so. But the trackless, before it loses too much value, might be a good time to consider replacements out there. Wouldn't go as big as like the thing North Bankton has. But, you know, there were smaller ones. Not your basic John Deere with the little plow in front, but a, you know, a good small size one that has a little versatility to it. Something, I would like something that we could take up to the park and use during the summertime so it just doesn't sit for all the time. You know, I think a lot of towns look for that. If we could afford the entire trackless package, that thing would be great. But it's hundreds of thousands of dollars and you're not doing that. Because you can get a good Kubota or something for, you know, a real decent price.
The mud seasons in February were hard on the gravel budget.
Yeah, we are having a discussion on that. The expense of gravel is gone way up. Our usage has gone up 40% to 50% this winter. We are out of gravel money. And I'm talking, talked to Mike today and we will figure out a way to get some more money there. We'll probably mean a cut in some other things. We'll have to mean a cut in some other things. You make a choice, well, that was a choice. It's going to have to come from somewhere else. So, but we're working on that. Because it is, it's extraordinarily high this year. Far more than normal.
But then, how many mud seasons did you, how many times did the road break up?
Well, we haven't had one really break up. And, you know, it's, it's a lot of potholes. It's not like we used to get. And we're not dumping the giant stones in like we used to with the big pieces of chunk of gravel everybody hated. It'll be interesting to see how this pans out as the roads settle in after mud season, whether this all disappeared. I mean, we put in some of those big chunks on East Road where we had to close East Road that time. And then we went back into digging for the burrito we were putting in, but they were all gone. They some so far, they just disappeared. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, the outcome from this expenditure this year. But, you know, we'll figure a way around it and we're going to get it done. We've had to do this before, just, well, we need to spend it on this. So July 1st is when you're getting that. It's just the way it has to be done.
Comments, questions?
Nope.
Other business?
I had one thing. I had, because we had been talking about the appropriations, the community appropriations that are passed at our voting in March. And I had asked Jenny Rosicky to send along how the town of Bennington does their appropriations. And so I have a copy of it. I'm going to hand it on to Dave and maybe we can put it on a discussion of things. Because I know that was something that we had talked about potentially.
We've got to...
And so they have a, they have a whole process. So I wanted to share it with everybody, but I'll give it to you, Dave, and then you can kind of distribute it and pop it on a...
Yep. No, that's been something that's been out and off discussed for a while. We need a process for it.
So, and this one is very easy to read and as to kind of what is asked of each organization, but also their kind of timeframe. So it might be helpful to just schedule it, so. That was my only thing.
All right, we have a public hearing for the sidewalk that I don't want to do in conjunction with a select board meeting. So we bounced about a lot of dates between the stakeholders, our engineers, our state officer. So we're looking at Thursday, April 27th at 6:00 PM.
And is that here?
That'll be here. And that present will be either live or on Zoom, PCRC. Peter Protrap from the state, our engineer will be here. I am going to be posting on the website and notifying the stakeholders over there by email with the alternate plans that will be discussed that night.
And this is the sidewalk that's over on Hawks Avenue, Hawks Avenue? Okay.
Did you say 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM on the 27th. So we really danced around a lot of dates in April where everybody seemed to be away one day or another day or whatever, so.
It's a popular month to go away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the 27th turned out and I don't want to go any further back, you know, into May or something. Again, because it's, we've got to get this moving.
Is this a selectmen's meeting where we're...
This will be a select board meeting because the select board is the ultimate decider on which direction this takes. But it will have the people from the neighborhood, like I said. Most of them will probably be on Zoom. I'm going to contact them all, have all their email contacts and let them know. I have the engineers, alternatives that are up for discussion. So everyone will be able to look at them beforehand and hopefully we'll get something productive. I haven't looked at them yet, so I don't really know what they say, but...
So that'll be a special select board meeting?
It'll be a special meeting, yeah.
And we have something on the 25th?
That was going to be this thing, but...
Oh, yeah, we abandoned a couple of dates around, but people had conflicts with things. So this will be the 20, yeah, it was that, it was this one.
March 25th was going to be this meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then I looked and we went up and it turned out half the engineers are gone. And then I moved to the middle and it turns out I'm gone. So it's like we've been all over the place. So the 27th is kind of come down to it. Everybody's available on the 27th, the engineers and everything.
And it's April, not March?
It's April, yeah.
April, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, March is going to work.
Yeah, okay. April 27th.
They'll have drawings or pictures of what it may look like?
Yeah, they'll be on the web. I'll have them on the webpage.
Oh, is that far along, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the alternates are done, so you'll be able to see. And we want everybody to look at them before we have the meeting. So, you know, we really have a point of discussion. And it's the best way is to look at them online. Because you can zoom in, you can break it out, you can kind of look at each, each part of it. As I said, I haven't looked at them yet, but it should be interesting, kind of curious. Some interesting alternatives, I'm sure. Quite expensive, I'm also sure. But there's great money for that too, so we'll see, we'll see what we can work out. And the other thing I had was just we, Naomi brought up about the, how to make this work better. So I mentioned a little while ago, I'm thinking of a flat screen up here on the center post that'll be facing the board so that you'll have the feeling more you're looking at the people who are zooming in instead of cranking your heads over this way. And even when I put things on this floor, it'll come up on the flat screen so you can look that way. Now, it'll either be hardwired or I can probably Chromecast or some other thing from my computer to the TV up there. So I think that'll work. I can't think of what else to do to make this move work. But it would only come down maybe what, two feet, two and a half feet from the ceiling line? So it wouldn't be in anybody's way out here. We'd be, have plenty of headroom. It's between the two fans, so that wouldn't be in the way. So we figure it's one thing that will work, I think.
Sounds good.
Not the back wall, huh?
No, it'd be too far back. It'd have to be too big. And I think when people were hanging around, it might be... I thought the back wall was too far away.
Too far away. And everybody's sitting.
I think, you know, when it originally goes there, you're kind of, you know, I know I will when I walk in every day, be like, there's this thing there. But after a while, it's part of the technology we need to...
Continue to do.
Yeah.
You can even have them roll up too.
Well, if you get into that, it can't be like a screen because then I have to have a projector over here.
Oh, I see. What you're saying is...
An actual TV screen.
This will be an actual flat screen TV.
Oh, okay.
So...
Elegant.
Yeah, I think better, but, you know, you can get a flat screen.
Yeah, I know, it's March Madness.
You can get a flat screen up there, but not a lot of money. They're pretty cheap these days.
That's a great idea.
I think it's a good way to focus it and...
Yeah, yeah.
A question?
Yes.
Is that going to help the sound? Because it's so hard for them to hear us and us to hear them.
No, the second part of this is we're getting what's called an owl, which is another sound system which should work better than this. And I'm also trying to figure out how we can run multiple microphones off this system. And it may require a change in system to make that work. The other problem is, of course, that we're going to have procedures where people in the audience have to come up, sit at a little table here in front of the owl and speak so they can be heard. When people are speaking back here, these microphones, no microphone's going to pick it up. You have to be here. The snowball is pretty good for sound. But if someone's talking back here and someone else is saying something, you can't hear anything. Has to be one at a time and closer. And really, for the benefit of the people at home, which was a problem at the last meeting, they would like to see who's speaking. So you need to come up so people can see who's speaking. And we have to get back into identify yourself before you speak. Just be sure to have the names of everybody who speaks, so.
And we couldn't hear them either.
Well, you know, there's a disclaimer which you'll see on all of our agendas now because we can't guarantee that anyone at home is going to be able to participate in one of these meetings. I don't know what equipment they have at home. We do the best we can to make things here work and to interface and we're upgrading them, but that's still not a guarantee that you're going to be able to fully participate from home. I just don't know how to do that.
But the owl will spin around as I am sorry.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, the owl has a camera that actually rotates so that when you start speaking, it'll point to you. It's quite exciting.
It is a very, sometimes it glitches. And especially, we're going to have to be very careful about speaking one at a time because it doesn't move fast. It like, and it's kind of jerky when you're on Zoom. It's kind of like a delightful like Coney Island ride where you're like, oh, gosh, all right, it's moving again. And until it kind of fixes on the point.
And I've been looking at them for a long time and not liking them because they became so popular at the beginning of the pandemic. The company was somewhat overwhelmed and wasn't able to service or even you couldn't really get a service call into them. So I understand most of that's been corrected now. It is wildly popular.
Yeah, many Zoom meetings have that technology.
Yeah, I think it's time to move on and hopefully it'll work. But again, like Martha said, you have to have the rules, one person. Because if people start interrupting, it's just going to be jerking back.
And it really is very awful to watch at home.
It can make you seasick.
Yeah.
But it'll be a step up. I think a few simple improvements like that will make the meetings better. And that's all I have for business.
Anybody else, anything else? No other business? No. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
Can I just make sure you have a copy of this before it's begun? I don't know. That I would order. It's just a flyer about the solar project. I don't know if you all have a copy of this.
I think I have a copy of that.
And also I just wanted to check to see if you got the letter that Kit sent to Dave.
We did.
We did.
Yep.
We did, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just watch the wires. Another thing we're going to...
It's a danger, yes, I know. I'm like, we don't want you...
Are you responsible if I trip?
No, no.
No liability here. My goodness, whoever is doing your paper, they've got very snazzy paper. I have to say that. Perfect.
So I think I had a motion?
Yep.
Sorry, who made the motion if it hasn't been?
Didn't mark it.
So Naomi made the motion, yep.
Tony seconded it?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.